Three council study session and do we have any citizens' requests? Heather Wiley, come on up and please state your name and your address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heather Wiley, 1910 South Drum Avenue, Independence, Missouri 64055. I'm here tonight in support of the resolution to allow free and reduced adoption fees at the regional shelter. I am an Independence resident, but I also volunteer every weekend in the hospital isolation unit at KC Pet Project. So I wanted you guys to hear my perspective on this resolution. So first, a few facts. There are many peer-reviewed published studies on waived fee, reduced fee adoptions. The bottom line is there is no statistical difference between what happens after a fee-based adoption versus a fee-waived adoption. Fee-waived dogs that are adopted aren't returned at a higher rate, they aren't tethered outside at a higher rate, and they don't get less care than dogs who are adopted with fees. Fee-waived adoptions and reduced fee adoptions can increase adoptions without compromising quality of life. Also, what I love about them is that many shelters are finding homes faster for hard-to-place pets like senior pets and special needs pets. Kansas City Pet Project has made it clear that without these waived reduced fee specials, they would be forced to euthanize more dogs. And these specials not only bring awareness to the shelter, the specials sometimes get shared on the news, which is free advertising for the shelter. So those are the facts. So anecdotally, I will tell you that what I have seen is people who come to the shelter to adopt during these specials to save some money. A lot of these people know that they're going to buy beds and toys and food, and that this is a way for them to save money. What I have personally seen is that these specials tend to affect when people adopt, not if they adopt. One of the examples that I see is I volunteer a lot during Chiefs games, and during these specials, I do see that the lobbies are busy. And before the specials, I would, you know, there wouldn't be very many people at the shelter during the Chiefs game. So I have seen a difference. I will also say, as a volunteer, I was concerned about the specials, but I have seen the way the specials work. So I feel really positive about them. In closing, fee-reduced and fee-waived specials work, and I've seen them work. And I want to thank you for considering this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and that's all of the citizens' requests we have, so we'll go on to presentations. If I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, we've already discussed city council seat vacancies last week, and the council addressed the issue. I don't know if there's any need to go any further into this topic from your perspective or from Mr. Covert's perspective.
Not from my perspective, no.
Likewise.
All right, we'll go on to item number two, and so, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you and get the presentation ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, I am Zach Walker, City Manager. Tonight's presentation was requested by the council following up on two resolutions that have been introduced. This is listed on your agenda as two separate items, item number two and item number three, but because these items are so closely related, I'll address both of them with just this one presentation. So just what I thought we would do tonight is have a quick refresher about what's led us to this point, talk about the two resolutions in a little more detail, and then what we see as being next steps moving forward from this evening. Okay, so just a little bit of a reminder about how we found ourselves here. As with most things, the foundational component of this is the city charter and specifically section 2.10 of the charter. That section empowers the council to appoint or remove members of boards and commissions. And back on February 20th of this year, the council unanimously adopted Resolution 6902. That resolution formally approved your 2023-24 action plan. The action plan affirms the priorities of the council and provides staff with a roadmap for addressing and implementing the core focus of the council. Within that plan is section 1.2, which speaks to community engagement. Specifically, the council is seeking to broaden and deepen engagement of the community in city government, innovating methods for inviting input from the community and stakeholders. Specifically, city staff is directed to, quote, "restructure or combine city boards and committees to more efficiently advise the city and engage the public." We are also directed to, quote, "create a standard city council, boards, and commissions onboarding and education process." As part of city staff's work to implement this strategy, Resolution 6936 was unanimously adopted by the council on June 20, 2023. The paramount objective of this initiative is to foster public trust through collaboration and cooperation to achieve goals such as increased efficiency of advisory board input, formalizing and streamlining communications between advisory boards, the council, and the public, ensuring policies and not personalities are the dominant driving factor of decision-making, and creating a consistent, predictable, and stable process for expectations, functions, and roles. With the adoption of Resolution 6936, the city manager was tasked with making recommendations to the council regarding uniform operations for boards and commissions. Resolution 6937 was unanimously adopted by the council also on June 20th. That resolution directed the manager to pursue efforts to consolidate or restructure boards and commissions. That led us to the first resolution, which is Bill 23785. This bill addresses how our boards and commissions operate. There are three core objectives of this resolution: to formalize and streamline communications between the council, advisory boards, the manager, and the public; to achieve policy-driven decision-making; and to create consistency, predictability, and stability by clearly defining duties, norms, and expectations. If approved, this bill will establish several uniform rules, processes, and procedures for all our boards and commissions, as well as the members of these boards and commissions. There are three sections within this bill, and I'll highlight just a few key provisions of each section. The first section pertains to membership. Some of the key highlights: Board members may only serve on one city-appointed committee at a time. During, two, during the recruitment process, the city will focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and will actively work to achieve membership that reflects, at the least, the demographics of our community. And three, the review of applicants shall occur by a panel consisting of either the council member responsible for that appointment or a liaison of the council, depending on the nature of the vacancy to be filled, the board or commission chair, and the city manager's assigned staff liaison. The second section here is communications. Some of the key provisions here are that city boards and commissions shall receive direction from the council pursuant to the council's annual goal-setting session, providing work priorities or other specific directions as the council may choose to provide. In turn, a board or commission will develop an annual work plan that is aligned with the council's adopted strategic plan. Each board and commission shall be assigned a city council liaison who would serve as the conduit between the board and commission and the council. Board and commission members would adhere to the "one-body-one-voice" principle in communication with the council on matters under the board or commission's purview. And finally, in this section, the board or commission should communicate with the council only through approved minutes, work plans, progress reports, or formal recommendations and resolutions voted on by the board or commission. And then last key section here would set some expectations for duties and norms of behavior, things like requiring our board and commission members to participate in an onboarding program, requesting our board and commissions to treat one another and all city employees with respect. Board and commission members, just as with city council, would not take action that could be construed as a directive or an order to staff, and board and commission members would not attempt to pressure or influence discussions, recommendations, or department priorities absent the approval of the city manager and only then upon an action of the majority of the council. Everything I described there would be summarized in a board and commission member's handbook and made available to each member at the time of their appointment by the city council. The second resolution and the second part of this presentation is Bill 23786. This bill looks to enhance our city commissions and advisory boards. Having thoroughly researched this topic, it is my recommendation that consolidation of city boards and commissions be pursued. The current arrangement is inefficient and all too often ineffective. At present, the city has 35 active boards and commissions comprised of 180 appointees and an additional four alternates. That is a lot of noise that isn't always clearly meaningfully received by the city council. The current dynamics require an inordinate amount of staff time to facilitate city council appointments to boards, prepare agenda items for boards, attend board and commission meetings, and respond to inquiries from board and commission members. Moreover, the scope of work for board and committees is duplicative with other board and commissions at many times, while at other times, the efforts of one board or commission may conflict with the efforts of a different board or commission. A consolidated structure of board and commissions would keep all functions of the current boards, align functions to the city council's action plan, while also making boards more effective and efficient overall. The goal for this work is to streamline the board's work, increase transparency in the function and role of board and commission members, and improve collaboration between staff, board and commission members, and the city council. This model allows for future initiatives to be added to the scope of work of these consolidated boards rather than creating an additional standalone board every time a new community priority emerges. Staff recognizes that there's likely to be some concern among members of the council and certainly members of the community about how to address the status of members that are currently appointed to existing boards and commissions. Our research indicates that this is an ideal time to pursue consolidation. Of the 180 board and commission appointments presently in existence, the status of those is as follows: 55% of board or commission appointments have terms that are current but will expire between February 1 and December 31 of 2024. 20% have terms that will expire by the end of this year, December 31, 2023. 14% have terms that have expired, but they continue to serve, and 11% are vacant. With nearly an equal split of appointments that will continue into 2024 and those that have expired or will expire by the end of 2023, it really is an ideal time to pursue consolidation without an overly tumultuous turnover in appointees. So the key deliverables of this resolution: We propose utilizing four key pillars to bring the work of current boards and commissions together in a collaborative and unified process. These pillars are community health and safety, administrative and fiscal oversight, community development, and cultural services. This would not be the conclusion of this process, but rather a transition to the next phase. Specifically, I would recommend a collaborative process to gain additional input. Through an engagement process with all board and commission chairs, staff will work to collect input and have board and commissions identify the pillar that most closely represents the work and functions currently conducted by that existing board or commission. The goal is to ensure that functions of these current groups are reflected within one of these four boards. So, in order to advance this process, I recommend that the council consider and adopt Bills 23785 and 23786 at the regular meeting on January 2. If adopted, staff would work with the clerk to develop a robust orientation process for board and commission members, as well as developing the aforementioned manual outlining policies, procedures, and norms. Moreover, staff would then meet with key stakeholders, including members of the council and the chair of each board and commission, to review their scope, membership composition, and evaluate the appropriateness of reorganizing or consolidating. These recommendations would then be brought further for further city council consideration. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You know I have a million questions.
And that is perfectly fine.
Okay. Do you have any estimate of the amount of staff time? If you tried to get an estimate, preparing agendas, preparing minutes, posting minutes, videography, meeting with the chairs, the actual timing of meetings, room setup, I mean, there is a ton that goes into committee meetings. Maybe that is an unfair question.
I don't think it is at all hyperbolic to say that would easily exceed 100 hours a year. By the time you contact each of the committees, so not all the boards and commissions have standing meeting times. Planning commission, we all know where they're going to be the first and third Tuesday of the month, but we don't always have standing time for those others. So you have to call each committee member, find a common time that can everybody meet, work with the committee chair to get an agenda, which usually means talking to all the other committee members to identify what they want to talk about at their next meeting. Facilitate said meeting, prepare minutes, as you mentioned, if it's one of these that we record or televise, cleaning up that broadcast so it can be archived and saved online, preparing responses to issues that came up at that meeting, so questions, additional research. So, you know, given those 35 groups, and again, those are the ones that are active. In this process, I did not count the Charter Review Commission because they've concluded their work, or the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Ethics because they've concluded their work. So of the 35 that are currently meeting, I don't think it's at all hyperbolic to estimate over 100 hours per year.
Per committee?
In total, and I was going very, very low, low, low end on that.
Okay.
So I think that is infinitely small, but it's, just to illustrate, it's an incredible amount of time.
So of the 35 committees, I've tried to attend, I'm probably at two-thirds that I've gone to visit so I can listen to the discussion, understand what they need in appointees, get a sense of the scope of their work. That, for me, is an enormous time commitment. I will say that the conversations are usually very interesting, but I'm also finding that there are things that are common to multiple committees, and I don't understand who's in charge of what. So if I'm having that trouble, I would imagine that there are other people having that question as well.
Agreed.
That also means that these committees are doing their work, and they are advisory to the council, but the amount of time for me to review all of those minutes is pretty substantial. And I fully admit, I don't have time to read every committee's set of minutes, so I'm probably falling down on the job. The other is that there's not a ton of clarity, from my standpoint, of what advice the committees are giving to the council. Like Parks, what are the top five recommendations that you are bringing forward to the council? Tree Commission, what is it that you need from the council? I just feel like there's some communication issues regardless of the number, but even if that, if each committee times 35 gave us five recommendations, that's a bucket full of work. So I guess that's more a reflection than a question.
And I don't disagree with your perspective.
So nothing in this plan would preclude you from having ad hoc committees, which very often make the most sense. You know, Charter Commission being an example, it exists for the duration of the work. When it is done, you send a love note of thanks to the good people who served on it, and then we take those recommendations and move forward. So we could still do that.
We could absolutely do that. If there was a very limited focus and scope of a task that the council needed completed, it would be very appropriate to pull that group together for that very specific focus. But in other circumstances, it seems perhaps that some of these groups were brought together to maybe address an issue of the moment, and now they have continued on and maybe don't have the same focus or purpose that they once did. That issue was addressed, and now it's another group that we need to facilitate, but without much direction about how we could maximize their value of the time they're volunteering for us.
So in the four categories, you, it's not four committees, it's four sort of chunks of responsibilities that we're trying to figure out how we best address. And you could have an overarching committee with either work groups or subgroups that then feed up and bring a recommendation forward to the council.
Yes, so an idea as an example, if there was the Cultural Services Committee, that group may decide, "The World Cup is coming in 2026. We need to assign a subcommittee of our membership to specifically start working on this issue, engage other community partners, certainly report back to the board as a whole." But this is a very limited, specific issue that some of our committee members are going to work on. So nothing would preclude some of those efforts from occurring, but it would all roll up into one of those four overarching groups.
And I'm going to put a pin in that particular topic, because I feel very passionately about a World Cup committee. So I like the idea of a liaison from the council. That way, I would know what committees am I responsible for and responsible to, so that they would have someone to connect with, and then I'd be able to help shepherd them in their recommendations to this body. I do not understand the one-body-one-voice.
Not everybody, as with most things, would agree with this, but one of the things that, from a staff perspective, we see as, you know, challenging and at times problematic is a five-member committee gets together, they vote four to one to make a recommendation, that one member takes it upon themselves to email the city council or come and stand at this podium and say, "I'm on this committee, they voted this way, but I'm here to tell you that was a terrible idea." You know, in our form of government, in our system, you know, democracy, majority rule and minority rights. Certainly, I think as part of the minutes that would be conveyed back to the council, it could be noted that, you know, Commissioner X voted no, and this was the reasons given. But sometimes it borders on subterfuge to come before the group or to email the council separately, the other committee members not knowing that that was done. They think they voted and made their recommendation to the group and didn't realize ongoing dialogue is occurring. So it really boils down to an equity issue.
But certainly, if that committee had a liaison, it would be okay if they expressed their concerns, but you're right. Like, once you vote, you're like, "Okay, we as a group made our decision, you move forward." Just like, we don't always agree on things, and we still move forward.
Correct.
Up here, okay.
Yes.
I'm thoughtful about the "you may only serve on one board or commission," especially if we have the opportunity for ad hoc, because often we need that special expertise. So I would have a concern with that, so something I'd like to understand better. And then I, how do you anticipate the direction from the council to the committees? How would that work? Often, we don't even anticipate what items they may need to discuss, so I just, how do you see that working?
Yeah, so we could use this past year as the example. The council met in November of 2022 and developed your action plan, which was adopted in February. This coming year, we're planning to get this body together early, you know, on January, February timeframe, hopefully January, to refresh the action plan, do a check-in on where we're at, and what priorities does the group want to focus on this year. But then, each of those council liaisons would meet with the committee and say, "These are the priorities the council has this year from the action plan. Specifically, Cultural Services Committee, they really want to see some significant strides towards planning community engagement for the World Cup. So we really need to work on that and make sure by the time December comes, we're able to do a year-end report to the council that shows what we have done to make significant strides towards community engagement in the World Cup."
And this is my last question. One of the things that I think is really hard is being able to communicate with 123,000 people about complex ideas. They voted for a number of different taxes. Each one has its own committee and provides its own report. The average citizen is not going to read each one of those reports.
Correct.
This may give us the opportunity to feed some of those into a single special tax report so that the police tax is in there and the fire tax is in there, so that the average person has one place to go and get some of that information. Do you see that as one of the opportunities, or is that just something that interests me?
I think this is absolutely one of the key benefits of going through this kind of process. I mean, imagine if you just had the 35 chairs of the committees in here, all talking at the same time. It's hard to discern a voice or hear with clarity what's going on, even if it was the chairs of the five sales tax committees, it's hard to discern and hear what the message is. If, the more we're able to bring these groups together to consolidate and combine, the louder and more clear their message will be. So I agree. Right now, these committee reports come in at uneven times. They're often, like you said, you know, rather lengthy because of what's trying to be conveyed. By trying to consolidate and truncate, I think we really sharpen the message about this is what that sales tax did this year, this is how much it brought in, what it was spent on, you know, it gives what it was supposed to do, the transparency and the certainty that those funds were spent in the way it was intended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Ms. Walker, so I want to talk about these four key pillars that you've outlined a little bit. And so I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are you envisioning four specific committees, then, that would be in those, you know, for, you know, general areas? Or are you, because the way I read the resolution, it says that the city manager shall develop recommendations regarding board and commissions into four key pillars. But pillars and committees are different things, and so I'm just trying to better understand what you're really envisioning there and how many committees you think we might actually end up with.
To be clear, the initial proposal, and this is, you know, part of advancing that conversation, but my thought process was this would be the four primary committees of the community. Within that, as we, as I kind of said, the councilor mechanics might be, you know, subgroups or ad hoc committees around limited or specific purposes, but I had envisioned trying to streamline and bring it down to these four core areas. And when I was looking through the list of committees, I apologize, that, these were the ones that really seemed to, if you kind of tried to start looking at the ones that really seemed to, if you kind of tried to start looking at how you could logically group things, making predetermined outcomes, that seemed to be the categories where you could work to have some very broad categorization.
I guess my reaction is a little bit that, I'm a little concerned that taking thirty-five to four may overwhelm some of these committees and, you know, result in, you know, a bureaucratic nightmare.
You know, I-
And so I guess my, just my thought being is that, you know, you're, you're basically getting ready to go and talk to, I mean, to the committee chairs and kind of, you know, use that opportunity to have that discussion. I mean, is there the possibility that you may come back and say, "Well, we changed our mind. We'd like six of these," or "We'd like eight of these instead of four." I mean, I'm just trying to-
Oh, I, yeah, sir. I, I don't have any pretenses that this is the be-all, end-all at all. This, my intention of this was to try to advance the conversation with the council and our committee members and the community. You know, I, it's my professional recommendation that thirty-five are too many, but four may be too few. But the, the overarching goal for me, the outcome I think we should all try to strive toward, is to make these committees as effective and impactful, as meaningful as we can. And one way I saw to do that was to look for areas where there were duplication or conflict and bring those together. But by no means do I think we necessarily got it right the first bite at the apple, and four is the magic number. This needs to be thought of as an opportunity to adjust upwards or downwards. And, you know, some of the existing committees, we may decide we need those to be, you know, ongoing standalone groups that don't fit neatly within any of these categories.
Right. That's just, I had that thought as well, is that there may be, you know, some of the, of the charter committees that are required that, you know, may need to stand on their own.
Yeah. We, we have, we have charter committees, and we have groups created by state statute that, you know, I, I think it would be challenging to try to get those rolled into one of these. I think the intention there was to have them serve their purpose for which they were authorized by legislation or the charter, and we, we ought not try to force them where they don't belong.
Well, so I guess my kind of general comment would be is that, conceptually, I'm supportive of what we're trying to do here. You know, I, I think having a kind of a handbook and a set of guidelines that everybody, you know, adheres to makes a lot of sense. And, you know, having a, a conversation with the committee members and then, and us, or, or whoever needs to be involved, you know, to identify what committees need to be, you know, consolidated. I mean, I, I agree. Thirty-five, way too many. Four may not be enough. I don't know.
Yeah.
But certainly, conceptually, I'm supportive of what you're trying to accomplish here. I just, I'm a little concerned about the number of four.
Yeah. And that's why I, I am very grateful for the feedback I'm starting to get here, and I, I look at this as just a continuation of a conversation. I don't think we've reached the end of the road by any stretch.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker, you briefly touched on charter committees. I know a few of them. PUAB, Planning Commission, Personnel Board.
The Board of Ethics, and I think the, the which one?
Board of Adjustment.
Uh, Board of Adjustment, yeah.
And Board of Adjustment.
Yep. I knew there was another one.
So there's five of those. Is that five? I can't write.
Yeah.
And we've got, how many sales tax committees?
Five of, five of the sales tax committees, and then the Tourism Commission. Part of their purpose is to oversight and give accountability measures on the transient guest tax.
The transient guest tax. So tourism with transient guest tax, streets, water?
Uh, stormwater.
Stormwater.
Mm-hmm. Parks.
Parks.
Uh, the police sales tax.
Police and fire.
And the fire sales tax.
Mm-hmm. One more?
Did we mention the street sales tax?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that right? Is that it?
Streets, police, fire, parks, stormwater.
Okay. So basically, six of those, five charters. That gets us to eleven. The charter ones, unless, I guess until we amend the charter, we wouldn't be able to really mess with those. I guess it doesn't say we couldn't combine them, right? But that doesn't make any sense, really, because they're mostly staffed, although we've had issues with the Personnel Board lately, for sure. The tax committees, I think people are going to be touchy about, because people are touchy about taxes regardless. And I think that's something we need to think about, need to consider, possibly, at least for a while, leaving those as standalone. I don't know how often they meet. I don't know how helpful or not helpful. I'm sure they're, they're a lot of work for your directors, and I certainly can appreciate the need to make their, make this process more efficient. Maybe there's a way to do that within the existing process. But, but I, I would be personally a bit hesitant, and I think we ought to think about leaving those tax committees in place. That raises you up from four committees a bit, but again, I think it's fairly important to the citizens, I think. Past that, I don't, I don't suppose your staff has spent the other hundred hours it would take to put together when the last time and how often these committees meet, or how often they've met. Some of them, not much.
We, we've had a difficult time getting quorums for some of these groups, particularly where we're thin on membership, or in some circumstances had to wait past the posted start time to allow another committee member to show up in order to have a quorum to conduct the business.
So that's unprofessional, and we should not be routinely conducting business like that, for sure. While we appreciate citizens that volunteer their time, that's very helpful. That's, we should not be begging to be able to have a meeting. Would it be overly burdensome for, if you take out those committees I just mentioned, while we're at it, the state statutory ones are the IDA?
Yeah, and as well as the TIF Commission.
TIF Commission.
We are, and I didn't count this one in our, our head count, but the MU Extension Council, the city appoints a representative of that. The city appoints a representative to the Jackson County Land Trust. So those are not included in the thirty-five that I gave you here.
Do we have any sort of organizational duties to that, or do we just appoint, is it a staff member or a citizen that gets appointed?
Citizen. That is a citizen. Yeah.
Okay. So that's not necessarily as burdensome?
Correct.
On staff?
And that's why I, yeah, I did, those are, those are ones where I looked at it more as the city's being asked to have a voice in an external agency's affairs. So I did, it does not require staff work or time on our part. Really, just the only effort we put forward is for the council to identify whoever you think is suitable to fill that post, and then, of course, the few minutes it takes to appoint them at a meeting. Beyond that, not any effort, and that's why I didn't include him in this.
Yeah. It might be helpful, and I'm not going to create work for you, so if it's overly burdensome, please don't do it. It might be helpful for us to see how often or how little sort of those remaining twenty-ish committees have or have not met. Again, if it's a hundred hours, if it's twenty hours, I don't know. I don't want to have you burn through that time. It might be time well spent, because if quorums, if we've tried to meet five times and quorum can't be had, that kind of proves itself.
That, that is not a difficult task for us, particularly among all of the, you know, the different staff members we have assigned to these committees. That'll be easy for us to pull that together. It's not going to burden any one person to work on that, and I do understand that would be helpful for the council to get a sense of some of the challenges associated with that. So we'll, we'll get that prepared and provided in advance of this January second meeting, when the resolutions come back forward.
I think that might be helpful. And I, and I really do, I'd like my fellow council members and, and, and you as well, Mr. Walker, and your staff to think about, you know, if, if it wouldn't be horrible to keep some of those other committees standing alone, at least for a bit longer. May, maybe there's a way that, that the directors can work with the committees to talk through either alternating meeting months, or, you know, somehow reducing the in-committee time, make it a little more efficient in the meantime. Maybe work toward consolidation. And we would, you know, certainly help with that if we can. I just, I, it makes me a bit nervous.
Certainly. I, point well taken. Appreciate the feedback.
Let me ask you one more thing. Councilmember McCandless was talking about having a go-between?
Yes.
Were, were we talking about a staff member, or were we talking about a council member?
My, my concept would be to have a council liaison to, to these groups. There are, again, I look at it as these citizens are volunteering their time for us, right? We want to maximize the, the use of that time, so that it is time well spent. I think one of the most frustrating things one of those citizen volunteers can experience is if they work on something that is then not either taken up by the council, or for which the council just, you know, completely has a different perspective. So to the degree that a liaison could be there and say, you know, "This is really what the council's focused on this year," or "These are the things we really need your input on," or, you know, "I could take that back to my colleagues, but I'm not entirely sure. That is something they're going to want to spend time on." I think that will help the relationship improve between council and these committees. It will also make better use of staff time, because staff won't go research a bunch of information, pull stuff together, that again, is not going to, for whatever reason, land well before this body.
I picture, you know, my fear, of course, is I picture Karen DeLuci sitting at the table at PUAB meetings. And God knows I love Karen, but that was inappropriate. And, and I've seen it when council members attend meetings, that they become the, "Well, what should we do?" And that part I would hate to see happen.
Yeah.
I love what you're talking about in providing some guardrails and some more productive direction. That part, I love. It's probably definitely worth a shot. I just would hate to see it become a tool that gets abused and, and sort of, you know, I don't want to see citizens that volunteer their time and are creative and smart people be manipulated by self-serving folks. That's all.
Oh, I, listen, I-
It's the line, it's walking the line, right?
I, I think we continue to work on that and refine it in such a way that there's value added by having a council liaison and not a, a chilling effect, or-
Right.
-taking all the air out of the room.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work you're doing on this, Mr. Walker. I know, I know it's in a big effort to provide another efficiency with your staff, and, and also for the citizens that, that volunteer. That's, that's very helpful and thankful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that might be informative for our discussion here is that, so I was chairperson for the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee, which handled police, fire, and the use tax. My reflection would be is that it would be fairly easy to add the other sale tax, taxes all together, and I'm not sure that citizens would be so concerned about there being separate committees for each of those if the, but as long as they knew that somebody was overseeing all that. And, you know, and if, I think there's some efficiencies that could be had if, if the reports were all the same, so you looked at all the, the same kind of reports and same, and you could probably do it all in a, a much more expeditious fashion that way, because you're looking at the same kind of thing over and over, and you get to, you know, you get to look at it pretty quickly, I think. Just a, just food for thought. Just, that might alleviate some concerns. I don't know.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, the Jackson County Animal Welfare Committee, I know they review the Prop P reports. Would that be considered one of the tax committees as well, or not?
I, I was counting the original brick and mortar sales tax ones when I, when I stated those, Councilmember. But yeah, the, the Animal Welfare Committee has had oversight responsibilities for that portion of the use tax, and then as Councilmember Fears said, the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee has looked at the police portion of that. So I, I appreciate the clarification on the use tax.
Okay. So I kind of agree with Councilmember Hobart on this. I don't really want to, I kind of like the, the tax committees the way they are. And I guess my objection would be to combining them. I know a few people on these committees that I talk to on a regular basis, and they take their work pretty seriously. I mean, I think you got to if you're going to volunteer.
That's right.
And if we start combining all these sales tax committees, that's going to give them more work to do. And that would be my, as far as that aspect, that would be my issue with that. And then I just don't want anything, you know, to slip through the cracks on it, and then you talk about transparency. We could be accused of not being transparent, you know? So I guess that's my big issue with combining those. Although, I do think thirty-five is too much. I think there probably is room for improvement on that. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And referring back to Councilmember Hobart's statement, making it clear in the guidelines that councilmembers would not be ex-official members of the committee.
Right, right.
I mean, is, am I hearing you correctly, Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that's an important one. I, I love the idea of working on a World Cup committee. I think that's great. We should do that and get that going ASAP. So any recommendation you can make on that?
We passed a resolution in September of twenty-two. We need to fill out the slots now.
Okay. I've got a couple of-
Thirty-six committees.
Yeah, I've got a couple of the thoughts, but I, we can cover those, because they're, they're kind of administrative things and not policy issues, so do that. Anyone else? Other questions or comments? Mr. City Manager, thank you very much for that. I know you did a lot of hard work, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate the feedback of the council. This will help advance the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And if I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, that brings us to item number four, Access Management Plan, presentation by Olson, Inc.
Yes, and I will ask our Municipal Services Director, Lisa Reynolds, to come forward and introduce this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Reynolds, Municipal Services Director. As Mr. Walker just mentioned, talking about the action plan, the topic tonight is another component of that, and, and the fourth pillar being a well-planned community. As you know, several modifications to ordinance and policy documents have been brought before you pertaining to right-of-way management and maintenance recently. So this is another step along that way. The Access Management Plan is pertaining to roadway access, so includes things like site distances and public and private access points to our road network. And similar to construction guidance, we had pieces in multiple chapters and multiple documents. And so this is basically a comprehensive effort to bring that into a single document that's more easily distributed to contractors, consultants, reference for CIP projects and things like that. So I'd like to introduce Jacob Berry with Olson, who walked us through this process, and he'll open, he'll have time, you'll have time for questions when he's done.
And Mr. Berry, please proceed. And Mr. Berry, please proceed.
Yep. So good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity. So my name's Jacob Berry, a traffic engineer with Olson. We're a civil engineering firm here in Kansas City area. I'm here on behalf of and in partnership with Mark Green and some of his department colleagues to present the access management policy and specifications that we helped prepare along with them. A couple of things that basically that we believe this will help advance the city's efforts is, I'll list a few of them here, but one of them is just to establish a set of guidelines for street snacks, the spacing, geometrics, minimum standards that perhaps are either unclear or just provide a concise resource for city staff, city staff and their partners that supplement city code. We believe that this will help promote safety and mobility to and from the city roadway system, as was mentioned. And then finally, we, a plan such as this is, should help actually make city review process easier by clearly defining those expectations, these expectations will be defined in this document, be available for development, development activity, city staff, consultants and the like, and just provide a, a clear resource, you know, when reviewing and approving plans. There we go. So just acknowledging a few people that have been a part of this process. So myself, Tom and a few others at Olson partnered with Mark Green and some of his constituents. Tom and Rick and Jackie, as well as a few other city staff who, you know, cannot be here today, but were definitely a part of this, this process along the way. To just touch on a few of the, the pieces that it will, you know, impact and, and have a hand in developing is, basically it enforces and applies a set of standards for all, all roadways and rights away within, you know, whether it be existing, say a redevelopment area that's underway, as well as future roadways and future access along city streets. It can, it can help, as I mentioned, development activity, just provide a clear set of expectations, but also helping the review of traffic, traffic impact studies that are done as part of these, as well as corridor plans that the city may take on, just help provide that, you know, set of guidelines, guiding light for those future roadways. A policy such as this is, is fairly common across other cities and municipalities across the, the metro of similar size and complexities such as City of Independence. Let's see. So just, just to touch on a couple of the, the topics, I don't intend to go into these in a level of detail, but just to give you a feel for, for what something like this is, is going to cover is, I mentioned, you know, access spacing, street spacing, signal spacing between traffic signals or other control types, access geometrics. So, you know, how tight or wide does a, does an access need to be for different, different contexts, depending on what type of roadway it might be intersecting? As well as just provide a set of standards for what's the city policy for when to install a traffic signal or likewise. So intersection site distance is another, another hot topic. And really what we're, each of these concepts that were, have been introduced was in discussion with Mark and his colleagues of really just areas that he feels like, you know, that needs to be more established guidance within city policy. So again, I don't intend to touch on these in, in too detail, but, you know, it just, it helps go a step further in, in establishing, you know, even just defining what an intersection is. In the, in the traffic community, we can go into a level of detail and it's more than just where two intersections meet. It, it has to do with, you know, the cognitive load that us as drivers that are all having to drive these roadways. There's a lot that we're put on drivers. So it's, it's a, just a, it's a level of effort to just make a roadway safer and really make the driving experience easier. And likewise, if you're walking or biking, you know, that, that's part of it too. So again, just one of the, one of the topics here, these are a couple excerpts from the policy. But the, the key thing here is that we believe we've taken into consideration, you know, that there's different roadway types all, all across the city, arterials all the way down to local, local roadways. And those, those different roadways and streets should have a different set of criteria. That's something that, you know, is, is established with this policy. Not only different functional classification, but what's the speed on that road? It all goes into some of the, the engineering and the standards that need to, to go into where those, those breaks and access should be. I mentioned driveway geometric, so this is just something that with an established set of criteria that's clear to follow for, you know, how wide a roadway needs to be, maybe how far the, the parking lot should be from a, from a roadway of a specific, specific speed, specific classification. That's all something that's, that's defined in this policy. As well as just establish additional guidance, you know, not only is a traffic signal something that's, there's a national standard. However, there's, there's often some confusion, maybe either with the public or otherwise, about when, when those should be installed. So this is something that is intended to help clear up some of that for, again, development, development groups, city reviewers, as well as public that would have access to this as well. So welcome any questions that you may have and thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions? Please proceed.
I'm just curious, what other communities have you helped develop these standards for?
Yeah. Well, we have not had a, a direct hand in developing, developing some of these with these others, but I'll, I'll mention a few that have these access managements policies in place. And some of those are City of Lee's Summit is one, City of Overland Park, City of Lenexa, City of Alatha. City of Kansas City has something that may not be called a access management policy, but a similar documentation. So it's a, there's, there's various examples across the city that, that have something like this in place and it's shown to be successful.
So it's, it's used both from a developer standpoint on their planning because they know what the rules are before they bring something forward to the planning commission, so it should take some of the guesswork out of that. And, you know, all of the communities you named are communities that are growing and evolving and doing a nice job. So it's, it's nice to see that they've used some of these documents as tools to move that development forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please proceed.
One question. So this is, this is the deal, just so I'm clear. Like out in Overland Park, they have all these big commercial developments, retail developments on these giant corners and they have very limited access and exits, like one in, one out. Or it'll be big, huge blocks and there's like one, on every road, there's like one entrance or exit. Is that what we're talking about?
This, this policy helps define some of that, yes. It's not to say that, you know, it's a copy and paste of what Overland Park is doing.
Right.
But, but yeah, that document is likely one of the things that helped guide in that area of Overland Park where those accesses may or may not have, have been.
So when you drive up and down Nolan Road, every strip mall, every commercial spot has like fifteen entrances and exits. I'm guessing that's probably not what this policy will contain?
Correct. Yeah, this, this policy is intended to, one of the topics that we, we call is consolidation of access or, you know, shared access across maybe adjacent parcels. So yeah, this is a policy that would hopefully help promote some of those concepts and, and have a, maybe reduce some of the sea of driveways that you might see on, on a roadway such as that.
Gotcha. Wonderful. If I might, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, I'm assuming this is not going to be a situation where we adopt this policy and then everybody has to go back and rebuild their properties that would be going forward type of thing?
As, as the city continues to develop, as the city continues to redevelop and as we're outdoing our various, you know, maintenance and improvements, that is when these things would, would get addressed. So yes, a lot of that would, existing things would be incorporated in, but at the time, like I said, development, redevelopment, rezonings, all of that, that is when these issues would begin to be addressed.
Got you. For example, so if we had this and the hub was redeveloping that, their corner there on twenty-third and ninety-one, then they could be subject to that then, if we would have had these standards in place.
Right. Now, you know, if there's, there's issues regarding, you know, posted speed limits or things like that, certainly we go take care of that as, you know, after council approves those changes. But a lot of the, the parts of this with the access and right-of-way issues, yeah, that'll be seen over time as different changes and redevelopments occur.
I think that's it for now. Thanks a lot for your work. Thank you. Thanks to your Ms. Reynolds for the work on this. Appreciate it. Director Reynolds.
Please proceed.
Just a, a couple of questions. So you said that you had not worked with those other company, those other cities that you mentioned. Have you worked with other cities though on this kind of project?
City of Baser, Kansas is one, we're currently helping them develop that same, same policy.
Okay, okay. And so would you generally say that the, these, this kind of policy would be more restrictive than what we currently have or less restrictive? Or how would you characterize it? Maybe those, maybe restrictive is not the right word, but-
I, I would say one thing that, that this does is, is a kind of provide what we like to call a context-sensitive solution. So whether it's, you know, while, while city policy might be, I don't know, I don't want to say one size fits all, but there, there are certain roadways that this, this tries to help, I guess, plan for. So if it's, you know, a forty-five mile, using the example, forty-five mile an hour roadway, you know, it needs and should have different access criteria than a local roadway might have. So this is something that it may be more, more restrictive in some cases, but less in others. But one thing I, I will say that we've intentionally tried to do is if there is any, you know, let's say it's a spot where it's an existing developed area that maybe was developed to those old standards. And that kind of goes to Councilman Hobart's question here is, you know, we try to be intentional of if there is reasons to deviate and now reasons that needs to be clearly defined and well spoken for, it, it does allow for, let's say assurances that might not go against this, but because due to various reasons, you know, if they're landlocked or otherwise, it allows for, for variations, I guess, if, if needed.
But the goal then is basically to provide a document to, for developers and other folks that, so they've, they've got all this information ahead of time instead of giving you a plan and then, and then say, well, no, we don't like this, we don't like this and-
Right. And, and the other thing that I, I've seen firsthand has worked great for other cities is a doc, having a document like this in place helps give teeth, teeth to council and city staff to, if there's a reason to, you know, vote down or, or go against a, a development, it's, you're able to point to something to say, here's why, here's what our, our city policy is, our code is. And, you know, it just helps, helps in that review and it just helps give teeth to that review process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Other questions? I'm going to ask an off-the-wall question. So, Mr. City Manager, please forgive me, but one of the concerns that I have, and lots of people bring this to our attention, I know all of you have received this, is traffic calming recommendations for some of our high, and I realize this is probably for new development, not current streets and things like that. Does it address that at all or?
This does not go into a traffic calming policy. No, this, this does not cover that.
Okay. And I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else other? Okay. I want to say, Mr. Berry, thank you very much for being here and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. City Manager, this brings us to Day Force Case Management Systems. So anything, how do we proceed with the next one?
Yeah, while our communications manager is getting that teed up, I'll go ahead and just give the council a quick introduction here. So as I mentioned at the conclusion of your regular meeting last week, the city is on track to go live with our new digital timekeeping system on December seventeenth. Lot of reasons that we're moving forward with that, but that was certainly one of the major recommendations from the special counsel in the police overtime review. Now that we are on the, the brink of going live with that new system, there are a number of other exciting initiatives that are unlocked because of this launch. So our Human Resources Director, Jamie Reamsmeyer, is here tonight to share with you some of those opportunities. Our hope is to get some feedback from you in advance of this coming before the council for consideration next Monday night. So I will turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie, and proceed as you like.
Move this down quite a bit. Hi, Mayor and Council. Jamie Reamsmeyer, HR Director. Wanted to talk to you all about some exciting information we had to share with you about the Ceridian Project as well as some opportunities we have to bring to your attention about expanding that project just a bit. If we may, and I just hit this, there we go. Just talking a bit about what we're still facing in terms of some processes that are still inhibited by some manual exercises that we have, as well as some, some things that we are not going to be able to integrate with the system that we're still facing. Although we're working through, through the payroll and timekeeping processes that we're going to implement and roll out just next week, which is going very well, by the way. We still have some opportunities to bring to the table that I want to provide to you today. As you can see in this executive summary, we have some good things to talk about. We have some exciting opportunities and some exciting resources to provide, but also some things that we can save some money on and some automations that we want to bring to the table through this same, this same system. This slide shows some complexities that we can streamline. It's a very good visual, in my opinion, that allows for you to see what manual processes we have now, as well as some things that we don't even offer and some things that we utilize third-party administrators for and some silos that we see throughout the organization. Specifically in our manual processes, let's start with that. We're looking at our personnel files, our records retention, obviously our payroll processes and timekeeping, right? Our salary adjustments, our disciplinary actions, our tax filings, our reporting, surveys, recruitment, onboarding, succession planning, workforce management, learning and development. All of these things are being done on a manual basis. They're siloed in our departments or they're not being done at all. And if we do them at all, we're doing them with a third-party administrator and we're having to pay for them. All of this can be streamlined and utilized through our current system. We just have to bring those modules into play. And that's what we can do with our current system if we just utilize the resources that we have at our disposal. The way that we do that is we can then bring that proposal to the forefront. What I've been able to do is talk to those current, to our current vendor and see what that will cost us to bring that proposal to the table and to increase our subscription and to include with our current subscription with the payroll and timekeeping module and to include these new modules to the system at a reduced rate. What we can do is include all of these various modules, not necessarily implement them to the organization right now, but implement them within our HR service team so that we can get them at a reduced rate and then implement them throughout, not overwhelming our employees and our managers, but implement them as, on an as-needed basis throughout the next couple of years to streamline and automate all of our processes. What that's going to do is have an, an estimated annual recurring fee over and above what the timekeeping and payroll sourcing fee is at a hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We have a one-time estimated implementation fee of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Now that sounds like a lot, but what I'd like to show you is our next slide, which shows you our rate on return. If you look at the left side of this slide, look at the financial benefits. And I'd like to break this down for you over a three-year period. It's super small, so I'll talk to you a little bit about those numbers. The administrative efficiency, if we look at the actual cost on the rate of return, what I utilized were the numbers from my department specifically. What we spend specifically on recruiting agencies alone is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. Bringing that source in-house- that source in-house and automating that recruiting process will save us those fees, because we're automating that process through the system. But the compliance piece, not only just on the payroll and the timekeeping system, but also on the automation processes, soup to nuts, is going to save us twelve-point-two million dollars, and those are conservative fees, over a three-year period. That direct benefit is a total of twelve-point-four million dollars. And then as we utilize that system, after, after the third year, because we'll be utilizing it at one-hundred percent rate, will be five-point-five million dollars on an annual basis. That's gonna save us eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-four hours in labor costs on an annual basis, once this is utilized at a hundred percent rate by our administrators that are currently using manual processes and the HR team. If you look on the right side of this presentation, you'll see a net present value of ten-point-five million dollars with a three-year return on investment of eight hundred and seventy-eight percent. I did check the numbers several times, and it is the truth. What I did is I cross-checked that with the vendor themselves, and they are true to those numbers. We utilize those numbers based on the manual processes, the inefficiencies of the systems that we're utilizing now, the vendors that we utilize out and outsource, or the modules that we can't even utilize outside the system, or internally. Okay? What you see in that little blue area, and I know it's small, my apologies there, but if you see the s- the lighter blue area under the darker blue area on the right side of the screen, that's what we're using as the funds that we have to put out versus the funds that we're going to see as our rate-on-return. The reason that you see the scalability up is because that first year, we're only gonna see a fifty percent use of that system, because people won't know how to utilize it full-board. The second year, you'll see a seventy-five percent use. That third year is when we're gonna see that one-hundred percent use. And then from there on is when you'll see that five-point-five million dollar rate-on-return. Okay? So then on the bottom, you have the financial assessment, the subscription of three, three hundred and five thousand a year, and then those implementation costs of four-point-six-nine, point-nine thousand. That does include what we're paying now for the payroll and timekeeping system. So that's consolidated fees. All right? Over three-years' period of time, that's one-point-four million. So that's giving you a full assessment of what the cost would be. So let's look at this a little deeper. Be able to see that, twelve-point-two million dollars in estimated year-end benefits, that two hundred and seventy hard cost, thirty-nine thousand two hundred hours of labor savings over that three-year period. So let's break that down a little bit more. Your financial benefits, you're gonna see that reduction of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A reduction in payroll error rate with Dayforce is three million dollars annually. I will tell you hard numbers, and I had the opportunity to talk with Councilmember Fears the other day. Just this last payroll, just the last one that we did last week, high level, what our payroll manager found was over sixteen thousand dollars in errors. And that's just what she found. The inefficiencies and the error rates will go down, and that's a conservative number of three million dollars. Reduction in punch-in-accuracy, the rates with Dayforce, the timekeeping systems, the salaries, the compensation, all of the things that we can make automated within the processes will be eliminated at a nine-point-one million dollar rate over the three years we're talking about, and then continuous throughout the process. If we talk about the manual processes and the productivities that aren't financial, and we talk about those labor costs, we're gonna look at those onboarding costs, right? The things that aren't manual anymore, that an individual can go into the system, watch a video. They can go on and do all of their training within the system. They can go into the system before they're even hired and do all of their onboarding courses, all of their onboarding paperwork, get into the system and have it completed on day one, so they can get straight to work. Those individuals can then apply in the system, get recruited through the system, and most of that paperwork's even done before they even start, before they even have to do their onboarding paperwork. Once they're in the system, they can manage what they're doing. Their resume's already in the system. So once they want to move into another part of the air, of the organization, that resume can be built upon. If I'm in parks and I wanna move to police, I can see where I can move, and I can see where the gaps and inaccuracies are in my resume, and I can fill those gaps based on what those jobs look like. Benefits administration, this is a big one. We can do all of our benefits administration and streamline those processes, beginning to end, within this system. And we can do all of our reporting, all of our ten-ninety-five-C reporting, all of our ten-ninety-five-A reporting, all of that can be done through the system. Obviously payroll, any reporting can be utilized by our management teams, by our admins, by HR, but it's all in one system, and it all can be seen from one platform. Non-financial summary, this is just more of what I was just talking about. And if we look at that, again, it runs almost forty thousand hours in three years. What I did for us here is I broke down a reallocation of what those costs could look like personally in my department. We can reallocate or cost-save on several levels. In my personal department, one of the reasons I was brought to the team was to utilize an HR department that is proactive, not reactive. So what we've done is we've utilized four separate positions to do just that. Take them out of those transactional roles and utilize those roles to do proactive instead of reactionary-type work. We're gonna have them do training. We're gonna have them be business partners, sit with our leaders, do things to have them coach their employees instead of react and do discipline, so we won't have litigation. Train them, so we won't have war comp- claims anymore. Do all of the things that we need to do. Let's talk about the timekeeping piece for a minute. Right now, we have forty-two timekeepers within the City of Independence. Forty-two. Did a little back-of-the-napkin math. Of those forty-two timekeepers, if they do one hour of work a day, that averaged out to about three hundred and three thousand dollars a year. If we consolidate our efforts, streamline processes, do a little checks and balances, and take those timekeepers out of those departments, put them under payroll, make them subject matter experts, make them three full-time timekeepers, cross-train them in payroll, so they can also run payroll, we can streamline those processes and take that three hundred and three do- thousand dollars and make it a hundred and fifty thousand within one year. There's a cost savings right there. It also creates efficiencies. It also allows our payroll manager to do what that payroll manager should do, manage payroll, not do payroll. It allows them to review our union contracts and be the FLSA expert that they are. It allows our benefits manager to get out of doing benefits every day and to review our contracts with our vendors. Allows them to do the jobs they're supposed to do. These are the kind of efficiencies we need, and the only way we can do that is to automate our processes. When I pitched this to leadership last week, that is exactly what I told them. Take your admins out of those transactional jobs that they're doing and utilize their brains. Have them write their grants. Have them make you money. Have them save your departments some money. That's exactly what we need to be doing. In automating a lot of these processes, we're taking those jobs and making them more effective and efficient for this organization. So I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I appreciate your time.
Please proceed.
Woo! That's what I've been waiting for. You been talking to Cindy Gray about this, obviously? No?
I mean, yes, I have. But, I mean, we've been talking a lot. The, the very first day I started, I sat down with my team and said, "Why do we have so much paper?" So it's been a...
You know, when Zach Walker started as management analyst, uh, he had a DOS computer, and they were doing payroll on spread, paper spreadsheets. That was eight, ten years ag- not even ten years ago.
Twelve.
Twelve years, twelve years ago, paper spreadsheets. When, when, when I got on audit finance, four, three and a half years ago, Munis was a total disaster, nowhere near being implemented. And we were seeming, we were millions of dollars in the hole and away from having this implemented. And I just can't even tell you how happy I am about not only finally getting to electronic payroll, but, uh, that you're willing to take this a step further. Now, what kind of kickback are you getting from departments and employees?
I'm not. Uh, now, the employees, you know, change is hard, right? So they're, 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 they're getting there. We're rolling out a lot of our training just this week on the timekeeping piece. So we're working with our employees to say, "Hey, it's, it's scary, but we're working towards these things." And they're really fine. Uh, this isn't my first rodeo in terms of rolling out a new platform. It's gonna be just fine. Um, the way to get through things like this is to just have the platform speak for itself. So over time, we're gonna get used to things, and it's fine. Leadership's been amazing in terms of supporting this, and that's the best, the best thing about this, because it does come from the top down. Um, employees are gonna be just fine. It's just change is fear, and that's the way things like this always, always go. And that's okay.
How about the department directors? Everybody...
Wonderful.
Okay. So the silos have long been a problem here, um, in a lot of different ways. Uh, everybody, uh, many of the different departments, it's been sort of a bloodsport on fighting for budgets and fighting for resources and fighting for their own sort of existence within the whole, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I am desperate to see that undone, uh, be, for efficiency sake and for a number of things. So you have that same vision?
Absolutely. No question. We have, um, there, there's no question that, you know, we'll have to walk that same path with them, um, and support them through this. But the job, in my opinion, of, of the HR department is to make their jobs easier. And there's no question that this is the one way to do it, starting, and then we can show them what we can do on the backside of that. Um, I've not gotten one question as, "How is this gonna make it easier?" They see this as a benefit. At least, that's all I've heard. Um, so there's no question that moving forward is the way we should go here.
So we had, um, there were some particular challenges with public safety on, uh, some of the program software capabilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I understand those have been worked through and solved. Any question about software capability on any of these additional parts that you know of?
Absolutely not. The first question I had, uh, to the vendors before I even approached moving forward was, "What are our capabilities in consolidating all of our platforms?" Here are the names of them. My first meeting was with Chief Desmond. And, you know, "Tell me all of your platforms. I need to know that they're okay." Second question was to our fire department to make sure that those were all the same as well. And, um, they have a platform they utilize within the Ceridian platforms called Power BI.
Right.
And, um, it, it's fine. There's no...
We got lucky with fire on that, I know. Um, so, and neither police or fire, um, are having a particularly hard time with this? Nobody, really?
They, I don't know who to push down first, who's gonna, who's, I, I, they both wanna be the first to volunteer, to be completely candid with you. I need to keep, keep him out of my door to...
Chief Desmond's excitable.
A little bit.
Little bit. I'm not surprised by that at all. Um, so what's your projected timeline if we, um, approve this, or if we, you know, at some point go ahead with this? What's your timeline?
So the timeline to implement is four months, uh, for the rest of these, uh, modules. The good news here is...
To get them purchased and installed.
Yep.
Implementing, though...
Implemented, um...
I mean, you're talking the three-year timeframe?
Give or take.
Ish.
Ish. So it just, it depends. Um, a majority of what people are going to understand and know about, we'll see within the year. Benefits, recruiting, uh, compensation models, modules, all of those things will be implemented quite, rather quickly.
Okay.
What we'll see coming down the pipeline are things like talent development, where we're gonna see, um, things like, here, and I can show you. So for example, this, the example, this career explorer, the last one on the list here. Um, and I was explaining this, uh, to the city manager's office when I, uh, had talked to them about this. Career explorers down the line. Um, and this goes to, um, if I am wanting to develop myself throughout the city and I, I'm starting from scratch, how do I develop my career in this organization? And I need to know where to go and how to do that. What is my plan? What is my career development plan?
What jobs have you had? What skills do you need to build?
Correct.
Or what do you wanna build toward?
Right.
Or what departments?
Mm-hmm. We're not quite ready for that yet.
Sure.
But we'll have the opportunity to utilize that module. Um, it comes with, it comes with the package, right? So that's gonna be a minute before we roll that out, but, um, things like recruiting, onboarding, compensation management, um, engagement will probably be next year, but we'll be able to do our own engagement surveys for everything. We'll be able to utilize, uh, performance management, succession planning. Some of those things will be down the line in a couple of years.
So some of this, i- it really will bring significant uniformity to...
Absol- it, that's the goal.
An employee's experience.
Absolutely.
Which, which really, God, that'd be a sea change. That'd be wonderful. Um, speaking of employees, it, does, does this cut jobs?
Uh, I mean, that's going to be up to our departments in terms of if they can utilize these resources in a different way or not. I'm not the one to answer that question. Right now, they're budgeted roles, right? But if those positions aren't going to be utilized in a way that's different from what they're being utilized for now...
That's something we can work through down the line. Mr. City Manager, how many openings do we have generally? I know we have a hiring, sort of a hiring freeze on...
Would you like for me to answer that?
Oh, do you, you know, well, of course you know, you're the HR, so...
It depends.
Citywide?
Citywide, we're anywhere from fifty to seventy roles, uh, at an, at any given time.
Okay. And we have forty-two time...
That's just timekeepers, right?
Keepers.
So that's a timekeeper that could have a separate position doing a separate thing. Most of the time, they're admin roles.
Gotcha.
That do other things.
A lot of other things, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So this is, this is not put them out of business.
Not necessarily.
Right. And even if it did, we've got lots of jobs still open otherwise.
Correct.
So that, that's important to us, obviously. Um, uh, okay, one more question.
Sure.
Um, asset management, particularly vehicles, um, d- does this tie into, uh, any of that at all? We don't have GP- I don't know that we have GPS on a lot of our vehicles. Uh, Morse Heidi likes to drive around in his Parks truck and hide out and stuff, so I, uh, he got that free van or whatever, and...
So the performance management would be in there, but not the, not the GPS tracking part?
Okay.
Yeah, asset management is not part of this, uh, particular platform.
All right.
Um, but there are a lot of intricacies to this, but not something like that, no.
I got you. Okay. Well, we'll have to keep an eye. Mr. City Manager, we, that, at some point, I think we should be, uh, looked at, obviously. I mean, I know I've talked about that a lot in audit finance, but i- on a more serious note, uh, Director Heidi is obviously not someone we have to worry about not working hard enough. Um, and that isn't the reason, but I do think we should keep track of our vehicles and our, uh, mobile assets, uh, you know, uh, and as we digitize our lives, uh, and remove the silos, uh, I really do think that's gonna be important going forward. We should be able to see where our assets are, uh, around the city, I think.
Yeah, and as you, as you mentioned, some of the, the assets have that in that, but we certainly share your perspective of the extrapolating that out to more and more of our city fleet, uh, for, for a variety of reasons is important. Safety of our employees, knowing where they're at, um, ability to, uh, you know, handle...
Yeah, find somebody if they're not responsive. I mean, there's lots of reasons to do.
Lots of things. So, yeah, that's, that's certainly, um, a near-term goal for us. Absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate that. Well, um, man, I, I really appreciate, Director, your, uh, um, proactive, not to... Well, man, I, I really appreciate, Director, your proactive, not to go back to the 90s nature of that term, but I appreciate the, I appreciate this. I'm, I'm, I'm for it, 100%. So, thank you very much.
Please proceed. Thank you.
So, you know, this is a forward-thinking approach to using technology to do things that make it easier for people to do the human kind of stuff when the machine can do the things that don't require that activity. But just so that I can make sure that I summarize and reflect what I think I heard from you. Up to this point, we've had multiple platforms, each with its own contract and its own fee, different groups using different platforms to be able to perform some of these same activities. We have been hand keying information and trying to hand audit, so using eyeballs to make sure that things fit with imperimeters. This will allow both a streamlined cost of contract, cross-training, so that many different people can use the same system. So, if I get transferred from fire to police, I know how to use the timekeeping system, et cetera. Because we do have some administrative folks who end up moving from different departments, so there's an efficiency of cross-training there. And it lets us pick up outliers based on algorithms and metrics, instead of having somebody have to go through and recognize, that just doesn't look right, as opposed to, you know, things should fit in here. Are there gonna be exceptions? Of course. But then that kicks it out, and you say, okay, I understand why that's an exception. My manager understands why that's an exception. Allows us to do a better job of stewardship of our, our precious resources. And then, much better record-keeping. So, we can pull information, we can run reports, we can say, okay, what are we using XYZ amount of money for? How many people need to do this type of job? Are we using our employees efficiently and effectively? Because, you know, keeping an eye on the funds is one of the important things that Mr. Walker has to do every time this budget comes up. So, plus, no secretary or, excuse me, no administrative assistant likes to hand-key hours in. They'd rather be doing all of the other things that help the rest of their team be effective. So, I'm excited. Did I misrepresent any of that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You got it covered well.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
I appreciated the heads-up on this the other day that we, when we talked. I just wanna be really clear on one piece. And that is that, you know, you threw out a, a number of 12.2 million in savings. But that's not necessarily 12.2 actual cash out of the budget that we are gonna be able to utilize in a different way, correct? This is, that's about people that can be utilized in a different way, but not, but, so do you know what our net, you have any estimate of what our net might be in terms of actual cash savings that we might be able to? And maybe it's too early, I understand.
It's too early at this point, but, you know, we have the business compliance piece, right? So, I would say the error rate that you can see on this, on this slide here, that $3 million, although it says $3 million, I personally feel that's conservative, based on what we've seen just in what we've caught. I would say that $3 million is a pretty good first-glance estimate that you will, you will find in the first year. If, if you would like a number, that would be one I would like, I feel comfortable throwing out there.
Okay. Well, down, down the road, you know, that would be interesting for you to report back and say, here's, here's actually, you know, what we think we can do.
Sure.
So, so I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Hobart's woo-hoo, and, and we'll, we'll, I'm ready to, to get on board here, so.
Okay. Anyone else have other questions? And so, just going back, if I may, on the 42 timekeepers, those are all people that probably spend, depending on the department they were in. Obviously, in police, in fire, they're doing a lot of folks. IPL, lots of folks. So, their job is pretty extensive and probably a full-time job for them, all day long, doing just that role.
Uh, it would depend on the, the individual, and it would depend on the role, because they have several in those departments. So, it just depends.
So, from a cost-saving standpoint, it may make their job a lot simpler, a lot easier. But you really can't probably eliminate those positions, because you're gonna be in a situation where they still need to do research, or what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, there could certainly be a reallocation of that labor, right? So, we can certainly utilize that labor for more strategic initiatives, as opposed to those transactional functions, for sure.
Very good. Yeah, getting away from an Excel spreadsheet to now they've got, boom, they hit the button, it does it, double-checks it against the contracts, and then we're on our way.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. And just a, I'm a, kind of a geek in this regard, did you look at other systems out there besides these folks?
So, I've personally worked with other systems, but because we already had the Seridian platform in place, just to streamline and to work with the best contract negotiation, I did not in this particular case, because we couldn't. But I will tell you that, based on my experience, this is very well in line with everything else, in the fact that the reporting structure and the cloud-based and everything system that it is, it's, it's right up there. And they work with quite a few municipalities. So, I'm very comfortable with this platform being integrated into our system flawlessly.
Okay. And then, just going back to slide number three, and I know the, the print's small there, but-
Is this the one? Is this three? I don't know. I should know.
It must be two, sorry. One, one more before that one.
This one here.
That one there.
Yes.
So, Dayforce will take in basically all the responsibilities that you have current technology for you. So, you've got Munis, you've got manual processes, you've got third-party processes. So, all of those will be eliminated, if I'm hearing you correctly.
They'll be consolidated, yes, into the Dayport, Dayforce platform.
And then, how long will you kind of duplicate to make sure that things are working correctly? What's, what's your thoughts on that? And I know that's probably a, a city manager question, not our question, so-
Well, I mean, not necessarily, right? We have, we'll have Munis for the finance platform moving forward, so if we were, if we were to need that. But we're rolling out the timekeeping and payroll piece of this next week, which is the nucleus of the system. The reason that this won't take very long in an implementation sta, from an implementation standpoint, is because that nucleus is going to be in place next week. So, these are going to be the modules that just work around that nucl, nucleus. So, so honestly, the implementation piece of this are going to be forms and different module pieces that don't play into the people part of it. The people part of it are already put in place. So, really, it's, it's the nuances to the forms that are going to be needed to put into place here. So, really, there's not gonna be much checks and balances necessary at this point. That's all been done already, and the hard stuff is kind of already done.
Okay. So, you've already tested it, feel confident of all that?
The testing has been-
Extensive.
Our payroll manager has worked tirelessly and has done an amazing job. On the record, I can say that the, the project management team for Seridian has said that this has been one of the most flawless projects that they've worked on in the recent past, and she's done an amazing job. So, I, I have great confidence that this is gonna go well.
Perfect. I just wanna say thank you for the work and a great idea, and let's get her on board and get it going.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other thoughts? Okay. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
And that brings us to tow service policies, and I think that was actually Councilmember Bryce Stewart that brought that one also, so we should have, you should have gotten credit for that, Councilmember. So, Mr. City Manager, how would you like to proceed on this one?
We'll go ahead and ask Tom Skinnell, Community Development Director, to provide the council with his findings and recommendations, as was directed in the resolution previously adopted by council.
Okay. Thank you, Zach. So, good, good evening. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. So, just kinda just here with this first slide, wanna give you a little bit of background. So, back in September, City Council passed a resolution directing the city manager to review city code and other policies and procedures that the city has in, in place regarding tow, tow service. So, taking a look at, at those, the current situation that, that we have, city code, Chapter 18, Article 25, entitled abandoned property and tow service. This is the only regulations in the city code. This particular article outlines the tow rotation call list. This is to be used whenever there is abandoned property, like abandoned cars in the street or for emergency toes, whenever there is an, an accident. Further, this chapter also authorizes the director to establish and implement a tow rotation call list. And then, IPD staff, they use that whenever they are in need of a tow. So, the city's tow rotation call list, we have established procedures. It kind of breaks it down into different compliance with service procedures, as well as general operating rules. And it requires any tow service company that is part of the tow rotation call list to abide by those. Things like the tow company name on the side of the, the vehicle, only one tow service provider can have, only be listed once on the tow rotation list, things like that. The, the procedures also limit the number of tow service companies to, to 10. Essentially, what, what it does is it ties the limit on tow service operations within the city that is capped by the unified development ordinance and put that in, in place. The procedures also outline that these tow service providers must make an, an application to be on that list, and then, as part of that, they have to follow the procedures that the city has outlined, as well as federal, state, and local laws. Diving a little bit deeper in regards to situations that are outside of emergencies, the city does not have any regulations that, that covers these. So, this could be a private, non-emergency tow. So, your car doesn't start, you want to tow it to the dealership or the repair shop, as long as the tow service operator has a valid city business license, that is all that they need. Or, on, on the flip side, if I parked illegally where I was not supposed to park on somebody else's private property, and that owner calls a tow service company, again, as long as, as, as that tow service operator has a valid business license, there's no other regulations outside of that. So, kind of boiling down to what staff found and what our recommendation is. On the tow rotation side, a lot of cities in Missouri utilize the tow rotation list for what are called emergency toes. Staff does recommend updating some of that, that language, plus also tying that back to state statute. Within the ordinance, it calls for the Director of Finance, so really just cleaning up the language there, and as I said, tying it back to state statute. In regards to the other tow regulations, recommending, recommend amending the city code to add the regulations for those other toes. Pretty much what I'm envisioning is you're operating a tow service within the city, whether you're on the tow rotation list, or you're doing these private, non-emergency toes, or towing from private property. Everybody's treated the same, everybody has the same rules and regulations in which they would, would play by. So, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Skinnell. Is there any specific things that you would wanna add to the language that you determined yet?
Some of the stuff that we have incorporated in the policies and procedures, like the name on the side of the truck, you know, apply that equally across all different tow service operators. As well as some of the, the operational things that are within the tow rotation, incorporate that into the rules that would apply to every tow service.
Okay. So, one of the specific things that I was thinking about when this was, when I originally submitted this resolution, was I know, you know, when somebody gets a car tow, especially the non-consensual ones, you know, they get towed out of a parking lot, it kind of puts them in a bad situation. You know, I don't want them to go to a tow lot and have to pay cash, you know, because they may not have it, and then it's gonna sit there for days before they come up with the money. So, I know Kansas City requires, in a situation like that, that you have, they have to be able to take a valid bank card. In fact, I believe there's a state statute that requires that as well.
Absolutely. And that's-
But I would like our code to match that.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things that, that we will do. So, we will, we will look for not only best practices that are, that are in our current policies, but also look at best practices at other cities in Missouri, and also cross-reference those back to state statute. So, whatever regulations we bring forward, it's hopefully gonna be the best of, best of the best, and, and is compliant with state statute.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. Skinnell, so you say it's on a tow rotation. I operate my tow service, and my fee is 50 bucks, and Suzanne operates hers, and it's 350 bucks, and they're on a rotation, I mean, do we cap the amount? Or it's luck of the draw? You got the expensive one versus Bridget's cheap-o tow service?
Correct. Within the tow rotation list, it does set out the maximum fee, and so, all of that is, is outlined there. You know, without doing a lot of research, we could also look into that as far as the non-emergent toes, but all, and the non-consent toes. Look to see if, if that's a best practice to set fees for, for each one of those as well.
And, and so, I know one of the complaints with tow services, some of them have a font about this big that says Bob's Tow Truck with, you know, it's like basically their card stuck to the side of the door, and it's the identification. Or, do we have some rules around? You have to be able to see it? Okay.
We, we will develop those.
Okay.
Without having gone through, I forget the lettering size that the tow policy, the tow rotation policy spells out.
And I, I know the police sometimes have to have vehicles towed. What is our policy? And this may be a question for you. We make a mistake, we tow a car that wasn't supposed to be towed. That has big ramifications for families who can't get to work, can't get to school, those kinds of things. Once it's in a private tow lot, what recourse does that person have?
If, if Tom is unable to speak to that, I might ask a representative from our police department to come up and speak to that.
I appreciate the ping-ponging the, the negative implication question back to me, so, much, much obliged.
I don't think it's ever happened, but just so you know, Chief Desmond.
Not that it's ever happened?
It's never happened.
No. I was expecting a woo-hoo from Councilman Hobart after this, but, no. So, we, in the event that we have a tow that was done either by mistake or we find out other information, they would file a claim with the city, just as any other claim process for a loss, and then we would be responsible for that, that bill.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Other questions? Any other questions? Mr. Covert, question for you. With regards to antitrust, is it illegal for a city to set the tow rates based on the averages of the, all the characters? I mean, I'm just thinking about processes and possibilities.
That's not, the city can set it at whatever they want. The antitrust gets into if they're coordinating with each other. So, if we're doing it on our own, as long as we're not, as long as we're not coordinating with them, that's, that's where you get into potential issues.
Right. Because the question was brought up earlier- Right, because the question was brought up earlier, which is a good question, you get, you know, player A is fifty dollars and player B is at three fifty, and you go through the rotation of the system, uh, then, you know, citizen that worked with B is getting a disadvantage. So just trying to protect citizens from that kind of situation is really my question. And I don't know what the best system or policy would be.
The, the way it works with, with this is that tow companies know ahead of time what the city rate is, and if they wanna participate, they do, and if they don't, they don't.
Okay.
And so they know a city tow will pay a hundred and fifty bucks, and they'll either do it or they, or they won't.
Okay.
And they can charge whatever they want when they do private toes, or whatever, if we regulate that to some degree, then I'm sure there, I'm sure there is some leeway for us to regulate that, too, um, but that's, that's how that'll happen. It, it won't be a situation where, on Mondays, your toes are fifty bucks, and on Tuesdays, your toes are four hundred. Uh, the city toes will be standard.
Okay.
Standard fee, no matter what company does it.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Skennell, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, thank you. Mr. Coover, thank you. Uh, let's see, and then the next one brings us up to resolution for strategies to increase adoptions at, so how would you like to proceed with this, Mr. City Manager?
I would begin by deferring to Councilmember Stewart if he has any, uh, remarks he'd like to make about, um, the item, and then we can fill in any technical details he'd like thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first, I'd like to thank the citizen speaker tonight, um, she actually kinda helped my argument a lot, and, um, I, um, this was just an idea that I came up with, um, you know, after some conversations and some emails I received about just increasing the amount of pets that are adopted at the animal shelter. So I worked with the city manager, um, which we give him the authority to, you know, do some reduced or free adoption fees, and then I also threw in there, um, you know, that the first twenty-five people that, you know, adopt a pet, and it says January the first, twenty twenty-four, but I guess it would be really after, after this is approved, would receive a twenty-five dollar gift card, just as a little extra incentive, you know, it's only six hundred and fifty dollars, if there's just something to throw out there. Think it'd be a good way to market it, and maybe even, like somebody said, maybe try to get it on the news, uh, just try to help it out. So I'd be open to any comment or any more suggestions by the rest of the council. Thank you.
Is that, you're, you're paying that, um, six hundred and fifty bucks, Councilmember?
No, I figured you would write a check.
Oh. Well, I'd split it with you.
All right, uh, we're gonna stop on the personal finance questions.
I'd, I'd split it with you.
Uh, anyone else? Other questions? Please proceed.
So are you anticipating that this is no fee ever to adopt, or it's episodic, or it's special events-related, or it's when we reach a threshold of more than a hundred pets, or pets who haven't been adopted in a certain amount of time?
So I don't know if it would go on forever. I think that would be kind of up to the city manager. Um, you know, originally, my thought was, we would do a free adoption for thirty days, you know, and then after that, it would kind of be up to him, but that was just kind of my original thought.
And what kind of budgetary implications will that have for the animal shelter?
So, so right now, um, the city has adopted, the council has adopted a schedule of fees, um, and it sets, you know, a minimum range and an up-to range for, uh, adoptions for various animals. The, the helpful part of this resolution is this would give us the ability to run specials on an as-needed, if-needed basis. So, um, for example, the Casey Pet Project was mentioned earlier. Um, through our research in this resolution, they have a Fee Waiver Wednesday promotion. That's a, that's a free adoption day. Um, I know that there's been, you know, around different milestone events, like the Superbowl or other, uh, things that are getting a lot of attention, tagging on to that, and, you know, having reduced fees or no fees. Becau, if this resolution's adopted, this is going to give staff the ability to, uh, do that similar kind of work to increase awareness and hopefully adoption rates at the shelter.
Thank you.
Anyone else, other further questions? Your floor, if you'd like to wrap it up.
No, I don't have anything else, that's all I say. Thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager, work with staff and come back with recommendations and say, what do you think?
We, we, uh, attached to this agenda item was the, the resolution and hearing no, um, recommended changes. We will add this, um, to the January second, twenty twenty-four meeting for council consideration.
So the only thing that we'd probably change is, instead of the January first date, for the gift cards, it'd be January the third?
Yeah, perfect, yep.
Okay.
And just for those that were, were watching, one of the provisions of the resolution is that, um, running, um, an adoption special, that, as Councilmember Stewart said, we'd amend this to January third, but the first twenty-five people, uh, to make an adoption would receive a twenty-five dollar gift card to the city's, uh, animal shelter gift store that's located there at the animal, animal shelter facility. So just another incentive to try to get pet adoptions up.
Very good. Anyone else, other further questions? Okay, uh, I think that wraps it up, and, uh, Mr. City Manager, anything before we, uh, adjourn for the evening?
One very quick item for the council and, and more so probably for your constituents, but, um, you've probably heard some conversation that the Jackson County Legislature has been considering, uh, how to spend or allocate their ARPA funds. Um, the county's, uh, legislature's budget committee has recommended six point eight million dollars, uh, for, uh, institutions that are based in Independence, uh, and some towards the City of Independence for projects that we submitted on. Uh, you could reasonably also, uh, point to an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's being recommended for the Mid-America Regional Council to hire homeless outreach workers, uh, in Eastern Jackson County. Um, that item appeared before the county legislature today, uh, that item, as we understand, was, uh, Councilmember McCandless along with Councilmember Perkins were, were there. Uh, Councilmember McCandless let me know that that item was continued, uh, today. It's probably worth considering asking, uh, our citizens, uh, if they feel so compelled to reach out to their county legislators, uh, cause, you know, six point eight to seven point two million dollars to our local nonprofits for things like, uh, home rehabilitation, homeless outreach, uh, feeding, um, our senior citizens, things of that nature, uh, can have a really transformative impact on the community.
Excellent, thank you very much for that update. Okay, anyone else?
Just a reminder that people might be getting a survey, uh, that will go out end of year. If you get it, please answer it. It's the information we need to make other strategic choices and decisions, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.